Okay. Hello, we are back in session and regular session. Today, we had a slightly different schedule and so we actually opened the meeting a little earlier this evening and went into executive session. We are now once again in regular session at 7:00 PM. And I'd like to invite Principal Becky Letman with her central students to help us with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening. We're honored to be here in front of you this evening. With the recent success of our Learning Commons, all elementary schools are now piloting flexible furniture in our classrooms to varying degrees. At Central School, all of our third grade teachers decided to pilot flexible furniture on a very limited budget this year. I'm honored to present to you two teachers from our third grade team at Central School, Mr. Anthony Haddock and Mrs. Lindsay Shea. And we have students here from third grade. We have five third grade classrooms. We have a few students representing third grade. And they're all here tonight to talk to you about flexible seating and furniture and how it's impacting learning in the classroom.
Thank you. So, we have redesigned our classrooms to include lots of seating choices for our students. Throughout the day, our students have the autonomy to choose a workspace that works for their learning needs. And these options can include things like standing desks, floor seats, collaborative spaces, and chairs that offer a little bit more movement for students.
With flexible seating, it allows teachers to change the physical environment of the classroom that promote collaboration and individualized learning on a daily basis. Students have the freedom to choose where they want to work that best suits the learning that's taking place. We love that our new environment promotes self-regulation, responsible choices, and engagement. Without further ado, we have third grade students from Central Elementary School representing each of the five classrooms to talk about their experiences with flexible seating.
Hi, I'm Alana. Choosing where we sit and who we sit with lets us collaborate with different classmates.
Hi, I'm Alana. Our new seating choices help make our classroom less crowded with desks and give us more space to learn and move.
Hi, my name's Kira. Flexible and flexible seating gives kids choices. We get more than one option than just sitting at one desk.
Hi, my name is Annie. And flexible seating means kids get to pick where they sit. There are many different table and chair options.
Hi, my name is Owen. And flexible seating gives us responsibility to make good choices about where we sit and who we sit with.
Hi, I'm Sarah. Flexible seating lets us choose between hard seating and soft seating so we can sit where we're comfortable and be able to focus on our work.
Hi, I'm Esther. I like that I can choose a different seat depending on the subject. I like a hard seat when I'm writing, but prefer a soft seat when I read.
Hi, I'm Maddie. It's important to have a choice in how we learn best. We like that our furniture can move and we can move too. Flexible seating makes our classroom a more fun and active place to learn.
Hi, I am Clara. Flexible seating lets us move around while we work to help us concentrate. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Great job. All right. In addition to that great job they just did, we also have some beautiful artwork from Emily Stevenson's Ramona students that learned the art of quilting by studying contemporary quilter and designer Corinne Sovi. Sovi's quilts are filled with geometric shapes, vivid colors, and high-contrast combinations of pattern and color. Ramona students created their own unique quilt square. Fourth graders worked together assembling the squares to form this large collaborative collage. Each square represents an individual student, but they fit so well together, just like the Ramona community. And you can see those quilts behind us on either side. So, please enjoy them when you're next in the MEC. Now, I'd like to seek a motion to approve the minutes of the September 24, 2018 Board of Education Meeting and September 24 and October 15, 2018 Executive Session Meetings.
I move to approve the minutes of the September 24, 2018 Regular Board of Education Meeting and the September 24, 2018 and the October 15, 2018 Executive Session Meetings.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Board members, are there comments, errors, or missions to the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes as submitted, please indicate by saying yea.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion carries by general consent. I would like to remind everyone at this time that this is a public meeting and we are among neighbors and fellow residents. Appropriate conduct is expected from everyone. We ask that people speak only when called upon, that everyone treat each other kindly and with proper respect, and refrain from distracting behaviors such as loud conversations, cheering, clapping, or booing. This is the opportunity for the audience to address the board. Are there any audience members who would like to speak at this time? Seeing none, we will move on. We come now to our board reports. And first, we have the committee reports. And Mr. Panzika has the school finance report.
On October 15, we held the Finance Committee meeting as part of the committee of the whole. We had a detailed discussion on fund balance reserves. Fund balance reserves are necessary to avoid financial risk. We discussed two types of risk. One, covering cash flow with uneven revenue payments. And two, external risks such as potential new laws, regulatory, or legal issues. A study of recent cash flows indicated a peak of just under 31% drawdown of reserves was needed before revenue was received. This is more than our current reserve guideline of 30%. The impact of temporarily running out of reserves is not operational. A bridge loan is possible, but has significant financial implications. Such a loan would have an 18% to 24% annual interest rate, but more importantly, would decrease our bond rating, which would impact our borrowing costs on all future debt. External risks that were not anticipated previously have been prominent in the last two years. Springfield has been exploring numerous methods of reducing revenue to districts like ours. In the past, we have addressed this risk by adding it to our five-year budget estimate. But as an alternative and more recognizable way would be to cover this risk with an appropriate reserve level. Given that the required level of cash flow and the external risks have changed since the guideline of 30% was set as a minimum for reserves, we are evaluating what a more appropriate reserve level guideline could be. With this analysis, we are also introducing a new concept for our district. We think possibly for the area. We are looking at establishing a guideline to limit how large our reserves could grow. This higher limit would be set in such a way to require future boards to address bringing the reserve level down or proactively identifying additional risks that would temporarily require a higher upper guideline. These topics were introduced. At our next meeting, we will further address setting appropriate specific lower and upper guidelines for reserve levels. We then went into executive session to discuss other matters before returning for further financial committee discussions. We began the process of setting the 2018 tentative tax levy. This process will continue with the presentation later in this meeting. As part of the process, we recommended to recommend a tax levy, we began looking at our long-term financial projection assumptions, including a draft capital projects and funding timeline. Required projects such as roof replacements and desired projects such as classroom additions to support kindergarten enrichment need to be phased in to manage budget and reserve impacts. This will be an ongoing discussion in future meetings as we work toward a levy request.
Thank you very much. And that takes us to facility development. And Ms. Schaaf, thank you.
Yes. The Facilities Development Committee met as a part of the committee of the whole also on October 15 here at the MEC. We discussed three topics. The first is the High Crest Phase Two construction, which begins next summer and includes the Learning Commons and Special Education classrooms, as everyone knows. At the meeting, we looked at refined designs for the interior space along with integration with the courtyard and garden. We should see budget numbers next month. Additionally, the new ad hoc garden committee met last week for the first time. On the committee are Principal Kelly Jackson, PTO members, teachers, and board rep, which is me. The committee is charged with providing advice on the redesign of High Crest's outdoor classroom. Second topic for the Facilities Development Committee was kindergarten enrichment. We reviewed initial budget estimates for the first phase of the kindergarten enrichment construction at Harper and Central based on current plans. Harper construction will begin June 2019 and Central's construction will be done in the summer of 2020. With the completion of these two projects, the district can begin offering kindergarten enrichment at Central and Harper in the fall of 2020. The third topic was large space air conditioning. The district now has at least two large spaces air-conditioned at each school in addition to select classrooms. The committee agreed to authorize funding of a study to better understand our current air conditioning systems and how much it would cost to air condition more areas of our schools. The cost of the consultant is $23,000. The next facility committee meeting and committee of the whole is November 5, 8:00 AM here at the MEC.
Thank you very much. And that brings us to our liaison committees and the Community Review Committee. Ms. Sternwiler.
The CRC met. They reviewed a map of their yearly workflow activities. They've been developing their approach to reviewing what one-to-one learning looks like for younger students, grades K through four. To this end, two subcommittees have been established. One, reviewing current practices, and the second, to review instructional approaches available. In other words, what other schools are doing. In this past committee, the subcommittees then split to organize what their next steps would be. The next meeting is scheduled for November 5. And a presenter from Leap Innovation will be there to present and stimulate instructional approaches to personalized learning.
Great. Thank you very much. And that brings us to Education Foundation, Educational Foundation, excuse me. Ms. Schneider Fapes.
So, the District 39 Educational Foundation met on October 17 at 7:00 PM here at the MEC. I have to say it was the most efficient, or one of the most efficient meetings I have ever attended. Hats off to Lyndza McKenzie and her whole team. Here are some updates. The partnership with the Taste of Willmet yielded $250 for the foundation. Science Olympiad registration opens this Wednesday, 9:00 AM. The foundation is still looking for more teachers, if anyone's interested. The GRIP grant deadline is October 26. And the foundation is already getting a lot of exciting applications for that. The big upcoming news is the fashion show, the District 39 Fashion Show. It's in the evening for the first time, November 7, from 7:00 to 9:30. You can buy your tickets online now. And if you attend, you get a 15% discount at participating stores throughout the weekend for those stores who are going to be at the fashion show. Bingo Night was moved to March 1. Trivia Night will be February 2. And the foundation is actually working on several other spring events. The foundation is also expanding ways to allow you to donate. They're adding a section on the website to allow for corporate matching. They are going to add a Giving Tuesday promotion. That's the Tuesday after Thanksgiving. And the foundation is a part of the United Way Giving Program. Finally, this year's Fine Arts Project, they do one every two years. The foundation is considering a photography challenge. The kids would submit their work and it would be installed in the schools. They're considering creating a hard copy book for the library and soft copy books for sale.
Thank you very much. Now, the legislative update. Ms. Kearney.
Thank you, Mr. Steen. Again, not allowed to report legislatively, but I will tell you this with the election, bottom line is with the election just two weeks away, specifically 15 days, much of the focus is on what will come after the election during the governor's veto session. One such topic receiving strong attention is a push to override the governor's veto of the bill that would have provided mandates of a minimum of $40,000 salary for teachers, which is Senate Bill 2892, Andy Manar's bill. Where was I? Do we care if the announce, what the Illinois Association of School Boards thinks of that? Who's reporting this? They're against this legislation in that it would affect over two-thirds. It's estimated that it would affect nearly two-thirds of the school districts in the state if such a new salary requirement were implemented. In other words, they read it as any gains that were appreciated through the new evidence-based funding model, the funding education bill that was recently passed would be consumed by these new salary obligations. They also think that under such a law, the next, the result would, the net result would actually hurt classroom teachers as school districts would be forced to reduce the teaching force in order to pay the higher salaries. But that's really what's getting attention right now, other than what's going to happen in the next 15 days. So, pay attention, stay tuned after that. I imagine a lot's going to go through in the veto session. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. And next, we have the Superintendent Search Update. And Lisa, I don't know, do you want to introduce this? That'd be great.
So, we hired School Exec Connect. Harry Rossi and Gary Soblinka have been our consultants on the search. They have undertaken seven different focus groups as well as a survey. And they've done that in order to create a superintendent profile, which they will explain. But they are here to share their findings and what the new superintendent profile will contain.
Thank you. First of all, before we get into it, just a couple of general comments. Gary and I want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to do this search. We've really enjoyed meeting with the constituent groups with whom we've met. I will say, and you'll see in a minute, other than the parent mourning group that included pass and parent organizations and the foundations, they were generally lightly attended. Not particularly surprising for that to happen in a district like this. And the other part of that is that we did get over 200 responses online. And so, that, generally speaking, these days, people enjoy weighing in online. But it's also true that, based on about 15 years of experience of doing this, when there are really major issues in a district, people come out in large numbers to the focus groups. We did not see that here. We've put this report together for you. And we hope that at the end of it, you'll have questions. And if you do, we're here to answer them. And also, we would appreciate if you take a little bit of time, not tonight, but if there are any additions to what we are presenting tonight, we're certainly happy to incorporate them in the report because we plan to use this profile as we are screening candidates, which we will be doing very, very shortly. And also, to allow you to use it, if you so choose, as you start interviewing candidates. So, with that, we, the first slide really indicates that the board asked us to conduct focus groups. And we list the groups. I indicated to you the level of participation to a certain extent, the online survey, which we found a lot of data to incorporate, and then to create the new superintendent profile based on all of this information that we've gathered. So, a summary of the data collection, we met with eight separate focus groups, a total of 87 participants. The largest number actually was in that mourning group of parents with whom we met. The online survey, we had 210 responses. And then, due to sampling errors, it's not considered to be a particularly scientific survey, but certainly good for us to have the kind of data that we can present to you that we think is useful. In this, in the survey report percentages are rounded to the nearest whole number. So, these are the questions that we asked all of the focus groups, whether they were person-to-person or online. First of all, what are the district's greatest strengths and attributes? Why would a new superintendent particularly want to come to this district? And we asked every group with whom we met to answer that question and all of the questions from their particular point of view as a parent, as a teacher, support staff, et cetera, et cetera. The second one, what are the district's greatest challenges? What should a new superintendent know before he or she accepts this responsibility? And I will say that these are not mutually exclusive categories. So, there were some people who commented that something was a particular strength, but also might have been something that might also be a challenge at the same time. The next question was, what should the priorities be for the new superintendent in his or her first year in particular? What is it that the individual people who attended the focus groups or online wanted a laser focus on in that first group, in that first year? And then, what are the most important characteristics and skills the new superintendent needs to possess to be successful in this district? Typically, that is the question that most people really want to weigh in on most heavily in terms of attributes, characteristics, skill sets, and so on. So, I turn it over to Gary now to go through the data with you.
So, this information that you're about to hear then may or may not be very surprising. This is the background information that we gleaned. This first section that I'll be going through is what we learned through the focus groups. These are the face-to-face meetings that we had with the various groups. These were the themes. You know, as Harry had mentioned, this wasn't a scientific study per se, but we looked and listened for the trends that we heard. So, you all have copies of this in your handout. But I'd just like to go through very quickly what we saw as some of the strengths that you have here in Willmet. And I don't think you'll see any of these surprising to you. First of all, and they're not in any particular order, but I will say this first one pretty much was what we heard first out of people's mouths when we asked, what was one of the strengths of this district? And they said supportive and engaged parents who like to be involved in their children's education. Okay? For most educators, we look for districts that we have that kind of support from parents. They also mentioned excellent and talented staff consisting of committed, dedicated, and passionate people. I will mention that it wasn't only parents that mentioned that first one, nor was it only teachers that mentioned that second one. In other words, both groups mentioned both of those pretty consistently in the groups that we met with. Was also mentioned that high-performing students are a strength who benefit from a student-centered environment. That's something that we heard consistently was that student-centered focus. And I think what we saw this evening, even at the beginning of your board meeting, is an indicator of how much the students are at the forefront here. Strong special ed programs, as well as programs to meet the needs of all learners, was pointed out as a strength of this district. High-achieving district, which strives to continually improve. This is something that, yes, there are those districts that are high-achieving, but it's that continuous improvement piece that is significant, that makes Willmet the unique district. You're an attractive suburban location. That doesn't surprise you either. Characterized by a stable community with generations of families present. Again, another strength of your community. And then, finally, fiscally sound district with a variety of resources. Resources being more so than money, parent support, partnerships, those kinds of things. You've got all of those things working in your district, and that was very evident. So, those are the district's strengths. Now, as we look at the challenges, again, keep in mind, meeting with a number of different people, interestingly enough, and we actually put it in writing this way, biggest challenge that people saw, and this came up first, and again, may not be of much surprise to you, is the supportive, engaged parents who like to be involved in their children's education. It's not unusual when you see strengths also reflect challenges in the district. Maintaining fiscal well-being, this came up already in your financial report or your legislative report. Fiscal well-being due to state-level uncertainties, as well as continually rising property taxes. That is a concern in this community. Also, being a more definitive solution to full-day kindergarten. Again, Harry and I are objective listeners here. And basically, we basically just took down notes of what people were sharing with us regarding these different aspects that we're presenting. Need for continued facility improvements in some of the schools, including air conditioning. AC was mentioned quite often. I will say particularly amongst the teachers, but also with parents. We heard it from both groups, just so that you know that it was relatively consistent. Lack of diversity among teachers and staff members was also mentioned as a concern. In fact, it was mentioned to us that, to be sure that we're looking for candidates that represent people different than what you currently have in place, if I can put it in those terms. Perception of too many curricular initiatives and add-ons with minimal takeaways. People feel that you're doing a lot of neat things here, but, and again, this is a problem with many schools and school districts. We add-on and we add-on, and we don't take enough away necessarily. So, that was mentioned to us. These are the things that people in particular would like to see with the new superintendent. Now, again, it's oftentimes a consideration when you're listening to a presentation like this to think, are these things that we don't currently have with our current superintendent? Not by any means. Oftentimes, they are characteristics that they see in their current superintendent that they would like to see continued on. So, don't read into these either way necessarily. You would know for sure yourself how you feel about these. What we heard is somebody who will listen to everyone and learn about the district, its history, and its strikes and challenges before taking action. In other words, this isn't a district that needs to be fixed. Listen to everybody. Develop sincere quality relationships with all constituents, with the "all" being highlighted there, so that one can demonstrate that all are valued. Creating a clear, consistent communication plan that provides clarity for all stakeholders. People in this district like communication and they want to make sure the new leader comes in with a specific plan as to how that's going to happen. Being visible in all the schools while assessing both the climate of the buildings and the quality of the facilities. Key word there is just the visibility in the schools. And then, finally, to review past district initiatives and programs and develop a process to evaluate them and assess their continued value and need. These were things that we heard that people are interested in seeing in their next superintendent in the meetings that we had face-to-face. Okay. These are the characteristics and attributes that one would like to see in your next superintendent, someone who's student-centered, who makes decisions based on what's best for kids. A great communicator, who's empathetic, and a superb listener, speaker, and writer. Someone who is a collaborative team leader, who builds strong relationships and develops a sense of community through consensus. An experienced educator with deep understanding of teaching at all levels of school district leadership. Someone who is a genuine, authentic, warm, and caring person, who is approachable and trustworthy. An active leader who prioritizes visibility in the schools and the community. And someone who's decisive and who can gather input but knows when to act. Again, you hear of all these things, and you wonder, is there such a person that's out there? And there are. We take a look at the survey demographics. Now, this is transitioning from the focus groups to the online survey. As Harry had mentioned, we had 210 total responses. Interestingly enough, to a person, we had the identical number of parents respond to the survey as we had teachers respond to the survey. Then you saw, we had some community members, support staff, other people who didn't identify with any of those groups, and administrators. This was strictly taken from the discriminators that were listed on the online survey. And you could see, for the most part, as far as the And you could see, for the most part, as far as the strength goes, 79% of those who completed the survey felt that the quality of the teaching staff was one of the district's main strengths. From 79%, it drops down to 49%, where you've got community supportive education, student achievement, following, school learning environment, use of technology. When you're looking at strengths, these are all things that, again, if we could build a school from the ground up, these are the things that you would like to see. All the way down to, we listed 10 of them, with even number 10 only having 18% but the student commitment to learning. These are all qualities of a district that I'm sure you all can be proud of. Going on to the district's challenges, interestingly enough, the first one is diversity. One would say, what does that mean? Actually, it means the lack of diversity, that people see that you're a fairly homogeneous community and that it could benefit from being a bit more diverse. Those things you can't always control, but at the same time, that's what people see as one of your district's greatest challenges or barriers to success. School facilities, then, was listed as next, followed by an emphasis on mastery rather than test scores. That basically refers to the fact that there is a sense that we're over-testing students. Okay? That we're not leaving enough time for learning. Again, Harry and I work with many school districts, and that's not uncommon in this day and age that people feel that way, and it's a challenge for districts to contend with. Interestingly enough, your fourth most popular barrier was "other." Okay? And you're wondering, okay, so what does this stand for? Well, they did list responses for us to go through, and we're prepared to share with you. Also, keeping in mind, 23% of the people who took the survey responded to "other." Not that they all said this, but the number-one "other" item was air conditioning. Okay? As far as the challenge is concerned. Interesting. Communication with parents and community is something that was listed. Use of technology for learning was listed as a challenge. Quality of district administration and principles. Challenging and state-of-the-art curriculum. You can see we're getting pretty low as far as the representation of the amounts of people who responded to these items. But nonetheless, these were the ones that, when people got to choose five out of a list of about 20 items, these were the ones that they selected as those that were the greatest challenges or barriers. So the characteristics and skills, again, looking at a scale and doing it as an online survey, almost 60% of the people felt that they'd like to see a new superintendent who builds good teams and brings out the best in others. Someone who's collaborative and includes others in decision-making. A deep knowledge of curriculum and instruction and student learning. Student-centered, again, came through pretty clearly there. Someone who has an inspiring vision for your future. Excellent communication skills, warm people skills, someone who's approachable, and someone who's open-minded and flexible. Again, you may say, don't most of these studies say these things? Not necessarily, but these were the key things that people selected that they would like to see here in Will Met for your next superintendent. Finally, we have the priorities for the new superintendent. Again, this is based on the online survey, so this wasn't people being face-to-face necessarily, but what they said through the survey. Someone who's highly visible throughout the district and the community. Developing strong relationships that will serve as a strong foundation for quality collaboration. Someone who will assess the quality of facilities in the district, determine how and if buildings can be air-conditioned was considered to be a priority. Maintaining fiscal responsibility, again, we heard a little bit of that tonight. Being aware of tax burdens and balancing that with sound district initiatives. And then finally, evaluating the overall instructional program and the practices and identifying those essential elements that are required for a quality educational program, including full-day kindergarten for all. That was something that we did see quite often represented on the survey. And then finally, keeping lines of communication open and transparent with all parents and all staff and community. So basically, those are the things that we gleaned from the online survey as well as the focus groups. We take all of that information, and then we develop what we consider to be those key attributes that we'd be looking for in your next superintendent, and that's where Harry's going to go ahead and finish this presentation.
Yeah. So Gary introduced this. What we really do try to take all of the massive data that we've gathered and try to put it together into something that makes sense, something that's usable for us and for you as we try to find the very best superintendent for this great district. So in terms of the profile, the first thing that we found to be a thread that continued to run through is the new superintendent should be a person who is highly visible throughout the district and community and develops strong relationships that will serve as a foundation for quality collaboration. Not unusual in a district like this, a well-run district with, you know, Board of Education that pays attention, that people are looking for someone who is going to be able to be the, if you will, the face of the district and is going to be able to represent you, the parents in the district, and the staff in a very positive manner, and clearly in a very visible manner. That kept coming up over and over again. A genuine and authentic, warm and caring person who is approachable, can develop trust throughout the district. Again, in a district like this, people don't seem to be as concerned. Not that they aren't somewhat concerned, but they're not as concerned about the fiscal aspects of the district as they are in keeping a community of learners together and that the superintendent be the face of that and be able to present himself, herself, in a very warm and caring way as he or she approaches people in the district. Our communication skills, a great communicator, someone who is empathetic, listens, speaks, and writes effectively, again, understanding the constituents in the district and how highly educated they are. We would expect to hear that from your community. Collaborative team leader who builds strong relationships and develops a sense of community through consensus. Collaboration kept coming up over and over again as we met with groups. Able to review past district initiatives and programs and develop a process to evaluate them and assess their continued value and need. We heard from a lot of the constituents, but in particular, I'd say the teachers most strongly, that maybe it's time to take a critical look at all of the plates that are around the table and make sure that there aren't too many of those plates and to make sure that there is a continuing process of evaluating and assessing programs. An experienced student-centered educator with a deep understanding of teaching at all levels of school district leadership focuses first on what's best for students. Just a little addition on to that is there were a number of people who felt it important that the person have, especially have elementary education as their main, as her main focus. Decisive individual gathers input, knows when to act in the best interest of all. Again, collaboration very strongly indicated, but also someone who, after all of the discussion is done and all of the input is taken into account, someone who can make a decision. Able to understand and balance the financial implications involved when striving to improve quality of the district's facilities, programming, and staff. So, again, very nuanced answer, I think, in terms of understanding that there has to be that balance with the finances in terms of what's available, what resources are available for facilities, programming, and rewarding staff. An administrator who has demonstrated success in previous leadership roles, a pretty obvious one, maintains the quality image of the district, is able to create a vision for the future of District 39. Again, very strongly, people feel this is a really, truly excellent district, but always looking for maybe to be able to create that vision that's going to maybe even take it one step further. So with that, what are the next steps? We're going to start conducting interviews and reference checks using the new superintendent's profile once we get the go-ahead from the Board of Education, which is not to say that we haven't already started doing some of that. I will tell you, at this point, we are at about 40 applicants for this position. And I think when Gary and I first met with you, we predicted that it would be somewhere around 40 applicants. And as we've said in other venues, not all 40 of those people clearly will fit the profile that you are looking for, but we do have some really excellent candidates for your district. We will then, after we do our screening process, will be recommending candidates to the board. That will come on November 14th. You will then begin doing your first interviews and narrow it down to the finalists. The committee interviews, which will be a confidential stakeholders committee, will meet with the finalists and give input, very structured input as we've indicated to you in the past. Gary and I will meet with whomever is chosen to be the leader of that stakeholders group to make sure that they have all of the resources they need and all of the documents. People will be required to sign confidentiality agreements and will be given a structured form that will come to you with their feedback. Board will make selection and negotiate the contract. I think we're on track to get that done, if not by the holiday break shortly after the holiday break. And the new superintendent begins his or her duties on July 1st, 2019. So with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Board members have any questions? Oh, sorry, Tracy. Yes, go ahead.
On the greatest challenges, barriers slide, or whatever, just I want like the context of something, if you have it. Where it says use of technology for learning, 19% see that as a challenge or barrier. Was that that we have too little or too much, or it's, like, what does that mean?
There are some people in this district that...
Could you use the mic? Sorry.
I would say that there are some people in this district whose perception is that there is too much, that you're utilizing too much technology, that they would like to see less technology. We saw that in some of the written comments that also shared some, shed some light on that for us as well. But that's something that people are questioning. They don't want to see their students only utilize devices for their learning.
Okay. And then challenging and state-of-the-art curriculum. 13% see that as a challenge. Do they, again, the context of that?
That would mean that 13% who took this poll, took this survey, doesn't feel that it is a challenging and state-of-the-art curriculum.
And then finally, school learning environment. Like, good environment, bad? I mean, again, what's the challenge, barrier there? We need...
Right. When it's on the positive side, when it's a strength, they see the school learning environment as positive. Here, they don't see it as a positive school learning environment.
12% don't.
12%.
Okay. But they didn't say why, or?
No, because it was...
Okay. It was just a...
It was a checkbox.
Okay.
Tracy, can I clarify one thing real quick? This was a list of, you said roughly 20 things, and they were asked to choose about five?
About 20 discriminators that they were able to choose their top five, that they felt were identified as the greatest challenges or barriers.
Okay. So I just wanted to clarify that because my interpretation then is, if we had chosen randomly, each of these would get 25% roughly. If you choose five out of 20, right? So there is a sort of, 25% is an important number. If you're getting dramatically less than 25%, that means people are not choosing it.
Correct.
Okay. I just, I thought, yeah.
But you helped me there, too. We pointed them to what they could choose.
Correct.
So they weren't open-ended?
They were not open-ended, no. These were specific, and they're the same, though, if you take a look at the positive side, the strengths. You see school learning environment there? Okay. That means 35% rated the school environment as a strength of your district.
Correct.
So as we said, they're not mutually exclusive categories. So some people see it as a strength, some people...
Right. I'm not asking for like the justification of either side of it. I'm asking, I just wanted to sincerely know the context. I didn't know where it says techno, you know, school learning environment or the use of technology. I didn't know if that was... And then I do have another question, but I can't remember right now. Does anyone else have questions? And I'll jog that out.
I do. I have one.
John has a question.
Yours, Tracy. So on the same slide with the challenges?
Yes.
You may have mentioned "other" and given us some examples, but how extensive were those comments? And could we have access to those comments?
Absolutely. Yes, we can bring you access to those next time we're out, or I can send them to Ray.
That'd be great.
Sure. Or to Lisa.
Yeah, but to Lisa.
Yeah.
Thanks. Tracy, you had another?
I remembered. But it's actually for Lisa.
Okay.
Is that okay?
It's okay with me.
When you were just talking about next steps and you talked about the committee? You had a stakeholder committee? Okay, great.
It's on the docket.
Okay, perfect.
It's coming up.
I wanted to know if it had been selected or not, but thank you.
No, they have not. Sorry, I'm repeating what Lisa said because her mic isn't on, but it is on the docket to come up. Any, no problem. Any other questions? Frank?
I guess I had a question in terms of how this information is going to be used by you. Obviously, the input from the community and in all these sessions was extremely valuable. How do you blend that in with your experience? And in particular, a lot of the inputs, as you'd expect, from the community didn't really focus that much on, you know, financial skills. And you did bring it into the superintendent profile, but how do you balance the inputs received from this very valuable research and your skills and experience?
Well, first of all, beyond the profile, and, you know, believe me, we will have these profiles in front of us when we are vetting the candidates that we're going to be meeting with. So we will have that in the forefront. But in addition to that, we are going to be asking questions about special services, financial, and, you know, what their background is. You know, in a district like this, you're fortunate, you do have a business manager. But we're still going to be asking questions on the fiscal side. We'll be asking curricular questions. We're going to be asking leadership questions, and we'll have all of this in front of us. So we'll be, then we'll also be asking specific questions from the profile that will lead us, given the fact, once we believe that they have the right background, experience, and all of that, then the profile comes in as to whether or not they're really a good fit for this particular district.
Other questions from board members?
I do have a follow-up.
Okay, and then Lisa?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, if yours is a follow-up, just go ahead.
Just with the follow-up based on what you said, that we picked the five category, or whatever, the five examples, or what to think about. And I couldn't remember this, I had to look at the survey. Did we talk, ask at all anybody, oh, how we are with special need services or anything like that in this district? Was that a criteria?
A selector? Was that one of the selectors on either the challenges or the...
I didn't notice it, that's why.
It came up in the focus groups. It was listed as one of the strengths of the district. I can show you strong special ed programs as well as programs to meet the needs of all learner.
Great. Thank you, I missed that. Thank you.
Sure.
Lisa?
To your comment about asking questions that aren't part of the profile, one thing that my colleague John mentioned, which I also think is important, is one of the great things that Ray does is build a bench. He's constantly thinking about succession planning, and I think that... He's constantly thinking about succession planning, and I think that that is something that as a district, we would want to continue.
That's something that we can add to the profile.
If you would be so kind as to refresh our recollection by...
With an email?
I'll send you an email.
Thank you.
Other questions?
We will definitely add that.
Yeah.
Just, I just want to add on what Tracy was saying, because I assumed, and I want to make sure it's clear, I assumed, since you have this slide up, that based on the district's strengths, and I, I guess I shouldn't have assumed, I assumed that you did have kind of a basic requirements, the overall requirements of the position, based on our district's strengths and what you knew to be necessary qualifications, and that the rest of it was the fine-tuning. Is that a correct assumption?
Yes.
Okay.
Other questions? I have one question of my own, which is, there, many of these characteristics are things that any high-performing school district would want and would be important to anyone. Were there any surprises, things that were distinctive, which you think will help us be able to say, ah, we, we need somebody, you know, for our fit, different from anybody else's fit, we really would like to have a strength there? And I'm thinking about things like we've just been talking about, special ed, building a, a bench, financial acumen. Anything surprising or distinctive?
The first one I would have mentioned was a special ed. I think that was exceptionally strong, that that came across that way. But the other pieces that we, they sound like they would be basic, but someone who is warm, approachable, and a good listener. There are many people out there, many of our colleagues, that we would not necessarily put into that category, and that's going to be something that we're truly going to have to screen for because your community counts on someone that they can truly communicate and collaborate with. And that's going to be significant. As much as we'd like to see that for almost any superintendency, it's exceptionally unique here because of your first one, again, your supportive, engaged parent community, it has to be exceptional.
That's very helpful. Thank you.
I just...
Yeah, sorry, Alice, go ahead.
If, if after looking at this and going over, I guess this is for Lisa, and if we come up with anything else we'd like to include in the profile, do we communicate that to you? Please, thank you.
Lisa's been great to collaborate with. She engages us often enough. And I mean that complimentary.
Not too often.
Not too often, but just right. And, and we appreciate that opportunity.
All right. Any other comments, questions?
I just want to, want to also mention Holly, because Holly's been great to be able to collaborate with, and of course, Ray as well.
Great. Thank you very much, appreciate it, and we look forward to seeing you all next, at the next update.
About three weeks, but who's counting?
That brings us to information item. Oh, I'm sorry, we have a question?
You know, let's actually talk about the stakeholder committee now as part of the search.
Okay. I think that's actually a fair point. So let me, let me give the, a little explanation of that first. So for those listening or hear on a, no, it's okay, I don't think you need to say thank you for asking. So operationally tonight, we are going to adjourn to executive session at about nine PM because of a schedule of a professional. So we're going to get whatever we can get done ahead of time, done before then, if we have to. We may have substantial stuff to do afterwards, that could be quite late. So what we were, what we're trying to do is get all of our items that we think are going to be more interesting for people to be listening to, done before nine. So we have an item of, that's related, that I think fits in this category, that we could handle under new business, but let's handle it now so that people don't have to wait for that at the end. Go ahead, Lisa.
Yeah, and I, I do think it does fall under the superintendent's search...
I agree.
...update. So we heard multiple times references to the stakeholder committee, and that committee is going to be made up of eleven members. We had talked about, based on the recommendations from our consultants, that these folks, this committee, they all sign NDAs or non-disclosure agreements, and they meet with the two to three finalists that we have. They get training and coaching from our consultants, and then they write down literally their impressions based on a grid of what they think of the candidates, and submit each of their assessments to the board. So we will receive twenty-two, thirty-three separate pieces of paper grids saying, here are our impressions of the candidates. What we've talked about is that we would get two SSU members, two WEA members, three administrators, two District Thirty-nine parents, and two community members. At issue, what we still haven't figured out as a group, is how are we going to select the two parents and the two community members? There are two proposals, as, as we've discussed, on the table. The first is an all-call to the community, nominate yourself to sit on this stakeholder committee, and then we would randomly pull out of a hat. The second option is that each board member submits recommendations to Ray, submits names. Ray would compile that list of everyone nominated, distribute the list, and then after several days or a week, board members would submit via email their preferences to Ray. Ray would let us know what the recommendation of the group is, and if it's not clear, we would have an official vote at the next board meeting. And so I'd like to put this up for discussion.
Okay, comments? I know Tracy, I think you probably have one, so go ahead.
First of all, thank you for that clarification, because I thought last week, when we submitted names for community members and parents, that the decision had already been made. And I appreciate that it hadn't been, because I think it should be discussed publicly. I just, I, I just want to put on record that I would like it offered to the entire community publicly, through papers, PTA, whatever it is, et cetera, the opportunity for anyone who wants to participate, either as a parent or as a community member, to offer up their name. I think that's the best way to do this.
Okay, thank you. Other comments, thoughts? Yeah, Frank?
I just had a brief comment related to that. However we collect the names, I'm not comfortable with randomly pulling something out of the hat. So I think we need to have some kind of discussion, or however the names are, are collected, and, and not just leave it up to random chants.
Okay, thank you, John.
Yeah, I agree with Frank. I was going to say the same thing. I'm fine with collecting, you know, whatever, you know, any number of names of people who self-volunteer, but, but not with the final selection being in the hands of chance.
Okay. Yeah, just one second, I want to just check around. Yeah.
I agree with, I agree with both Frank and John.
Tracy?
I just have a question then for the three of them. Like, why are we not comfortable with randomly selecting names? What's our criteria in that we already have two people from SSU, two people from WEA? It's not like these four people are deciding who our superintendent is. Why would we control that process?
Thoughts? Go ahead.
I'd like to see a well-represented, in those four people, I would like to make sure that there's a well-represented group of demographics, different demographics, different areas, different age groups. And if you just randomly select, then there's no assurance that, that different ages, different, you know, retired, you know, stakeholders who are retired in the community are represented, as well as family, you know, parents who have young children in the community are represented, or west-well met, east-well, I mean, you, there's, there are myriad, there are myriad different groups that could be represented. And I just think it's, that's a discussion we should have, and I think it's, it's actually one that we should consider carefully.
Okay. Alice, did you have?
Well, I was going to agree with Ellen. I think, I think there's so few people, there are four, four positions only, and I think it's a, it's worth a discussion and sort of trying to have better representation of the community if we can with those four, only four people.
Okay. Other thoughts, Lisa?
I think one thing to think about as well is, this is a posi, a, a, a place at a table where it could be that you are asking people who are involved in the community and already have a sense of what District Thirty-nine is, and have demonstrated a level of commitment already.
Okay. Yeah, Tracy?
I just want to make a final comment in response to all that. We do, again, we have PTA NO representatives, we have ed founding, well, we've had input from all those people in that we had stakeholder focus groups who are represented, but there's some people who can't volunteer and work on the, or work, volunteer for the Edification Foundation, or the PTOs or As, or anything, but are still very engaged in this community by living in this community and having children in this community and going to the school. This would be an opportunity for them to participate. So again, I'm one member, but I think it's, for me, it's very important that anyone in this community have the opportunity to do so, and in that we have picked and selected all other stakeholders in this process. I don't see a big risk in allowing for four, two random community, random community members who have reached out to do that, and two random parents who have expressed interest in doing that, when we have all of us at the table and all those other, that other input.
Yep, and, and I just, I do want to be clear, because I, I think it's important, this committee will give, the four members plus all the other members, will give input in their evaluations to the board. At the end of the day, I think every, all of us understand, but I want the public to understand as well, it will be the board who will decide. Lisa, could you remind us, remind me, just because I've forgotten, we're going to have four members, two parents, and two community members, who the other members are and how we've asked them to be selected? Mike's, Mike?
Sorry, two SSU members picked by SSU, two WEA members picked by WEA. I mean, sorry. Three administrators, Ray has recommendations, and then the parents and the community members, that's what we're discussing tonight.
Okay, thank you.
I don't understand, Tracy.
That we recommend, or that we pick?
That we, we're discussing a process for selection, Tracy.
Yep. Ellen?
I have one other thought. You know, we were chosen by the community, and we, I think it is reasonable that we choose, we are choosing representatives from our community to stand for the community in interviewing people who are potentially coming to us, who are interested in working for our community, some of whom will not end up working here, who will go away, you know, possibly not working here, and will have said what their experience having interviewed here will be like. And I think that, that that process should be a dignified one, and I, for one, would want to ensure that the people that are inter, are, are doing those interviews conduct themselves, and I feel comfortable that every person on that committee is going to conduct themselves with, you know, decorum and, and with, you know...
Who we select there?
Well, I would, I would expect that the people we choose would be people that we respect, that we, that are well-spoken and will listen to them and ask good questions.
Okay. In a moment, I want to ask for a motion to decide how we're going to choose these people. One, we have two options on the table. So if anybody wants to make a motion, I'll ask for that in just a minute. Before we do, just want to see if there are any other closing thoughts or comments before we entertain a motion. John?
Yeah, I do. Just to be clear about what we're choosing, I, I think, I think what I'm hearing is we're all open to whoever, whatever names go in the hats. It's, it's the final decision on who's going to be the representatives.
So I, so the first one, one possible, so we'll see what motion is made, but one thing that Lisa mentioned is that board members would submit names to Ray...
Right.
And that we would then decide. What's left open in that, in my mind, is that any members of the public are more than welcome to email to any board member and say, I would like my name to be in the hat. So I think in that sense, you know, well, Tracy, you are willing to entertain anybody's, you, you, you want to do it randomly, so certainly people can email to probably any of us and get their name in the hat, but, but Tracy, certainly you.
That's what I'm saying, but we just, so, again, a motion hasn't been made...
Right.
But I'm just confused by what we were, we were asked the other day to submit who we would, so where, if, so assuming...
Yeah.
The motion is made to, I mean, how are, has that decision not already been made? Is what I'm, we were asked to submit from board members our suggestions for committee members...
Yep.
And parent, last week.
So my interpretation, and...
So I haven't asked anyone. When I'm saying, where's my opportunity to ask, how would anybody in the community know to email me? Okay.
So I think my, so my interpretation is, we never got to closure on that, because we really didn't, we really didn't decide what's the best way, because we didn't agree. So...
But we asked for recommendations from board members.
We did ask for recommendations, but I think the, the point is, now we, we'll see what the motion is, but anticipating that the motion, that there will be a motion to, for the one that Lisa, one of the two that Lisa suggested, which is that we submit names, then I think we have to give a little bit of time to submit names, and I think in that time, you know, that's, maybe it's a week or something, members of the public can certainly email us and say, hey, I'd like to, my name in the hat. To me, that's fine, again, we'll see what the motion is. Fair enough?
I'm prepared to make a motion, if you...
Yeah, I'll entertain a motion. Are people ready to entertain a motion? Okay, go for it.
I'd like to make a motion to invite the entire District Thirty-nine community, and that includes parents and community members, to submit their names to any, to the Board of Ed, or men, any member of the Board of Ed. We should probably be, all be copied on that. Anyway, now my motion's becoming a conversation, but, or a thought. Anyway, that's, that's my motion, is that anybody in the community, community member being defined as a parent or community member, by community member, you don't have kids here, is what I'm, I mean, living within the boundaries to submit their names to us.
Okay, that doesn't get it, that's fine, and, and that's the motion made, and so I'll ask for a second and a second. I do want to clarify, that doesn't get us all the way to the selection, right? So we can, you can either continue with your motion...
I'll continue with the motion, sorry. I want to, well, I want to...
Go ahead.
I can add to that motion, I can, I can finish the thought then.
You want to just have that as?
No.
Okay, go for it.
Yeah. I'll just continue from where I left off. And that, after all those submissions are entered, we literally pick them from a hat at a board meeting.
Okay.
Public board meeting.
Okay. A motion has been made. Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded, so I'm going to go ahead and do voice vote. If, if there's a need, we can do a roll-car vote, but we can certainly do this on voice vote. So all in favor of the, the motion, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Any opposed?
No.
Yea.
Okay. Motion does not carry. I will entertain a second motion to decide how we're going to do these, the selection, if anybody has a second motion. Lisa, or, yeah, go ahead, Lisa.
I move that we submit names to Dr. Lekner, and the community may self-nominate by emailing any board member, and that through that process, we then look at the whole list and see if we can come to consensus on the four, two community and two parent members. Is that clear enough?
Okay. I think it's clear enough. It's silent on what happens if we don't reach consensus. Do you have any?
Then we bring it to a board meeting for discussion.
Okay.
No?
I just don't know how that's going to work, if it's going to be better.
I don't either. We're...
All right, the motion has been made, and then we, is there a second?
I second.
Okay. And... And Tracy, I apologize, I should have asked for any discussion on your motion, but hopefully we're okay. Is there any discuss, because these are new motions, I want to ask real quick, does anybody have any discussion or question?
I do, which I was going to say after Tracy's, and I'll say after yours, is if we're going to invite the community to submit their names to be on this selection committee, we have to come up with sort of a really good communication plan, especially to community members at large, people that do not have children in District 39. It's easy for us to communicate with people in District 39 kind of quickly, but not to the community at large, so I just wonder how we're going to do that.
How do we reach out for CRC members? I'm sorry, you didn't call on me.
No, thank you. Let me call on Ellen first, and I'll come back to you. Yeah, go ahead.
I was just going to say that we are going to have to give them the same outline exactly as what we provided already for the names that we've submitted, so it should be exactly the same opportunity to provide the information about themselves, so we have equal, so we can judge equally.
Okay.
I mean.
Okay. Comment?
Two things, one, I'm happy to re-pull out my recommendations, because I would want the community to supersede who I'm recommending, if there's interest or whatever, right there. I do not feel comfortable and did not then choosing who should be in that committee mem, without having asked them, or, and I believe people should be able to exercise their opinion to participate, or their need, want to, but how are we, how do we seek out CRC members, et cetera, that's, so, and communicate that publicly?
So, it's a good question, and I think Alice's point is a good one. That said, the motion right now is on the way that we select folks and not on the communication. Certainly this meeting is one part of the communication. So, given that, I want to see if there's any more discussion on this particular motion, recognizing that there's an open issue about how we communicate and advertise. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I, I think, I think we are consensus-driven, and we'll get to a consensus, I'm not too worried about this.
Okay. Lisa, do you have something else you want to say?
I just want to point out that I don't think you need to, someone would need to take back the recommendations made. That list of people would stay, and we're just opening the process up just a little bit more. I just want people to recognize, the one thing I would feel very uncomfortable with is we have a list of names, and if it came down to having to discuss in open session a list of 30 names, 40 names, and do pros and cons for people who didn't, some people who didn't even ask to be considered, I would find that a little uncomfortable. And so I do think that maybe I need to amend my motion, or we need to somehow rethink this to get us all the way to the finish, because we don't want to be stuck in a place where we're collectively uncomfortable, or, I'm not, I don't want to be stuck in a place where I'm uncomfortable, I don't want to speak for everybody else.
Okay. And that's, you know, one point is that we can vote down what you just said, and then we can make a motion for the, for the entire process. Anything else? Okay. Motion has been made and seconded, again, I'm going to do it on voice vote. All in favor, please indicate by saying yea. Any opposed? Please say nay.
Nay.
Okay, the motion does not carry. I will entertain another motion to get this done. What do we, who would like to make a motion?
Well, should we try yours again? Something like yours again. Okay, I'll try it. I move that we should set up the selection process for the superintendent search committee members, where we submit names, and we also ask the community at large, the Willmet community or within the District 39 boundaries, anybody who's interested to please submit their name to us. We have to figure out, well, I'll take that out of the motion, and then we, once we have the names, we sit down in a closed session, if that's possible, to, and discuss candidates. Or, we can't do that in closed session?
I don't think that's possible.
Okay.
That's not a reason to go into closed session.
Okay, so.
All right.
And I'm going to withdraw that for a second, should I withdraw that?
Or, do you want to withdraw it, or do you want to say, I mean, go back to the idea that we had, where the board would provide feedback to Ray, who would ultimately compile people's responses?
Okay, so we're going to submit names, ask the community to submit names that they'd like to be a part of the selection process, and then the board will communicate with Ray depending, on, on candidates for the four positions for the selection committee.
Not at a board meeting?
Correct.
Well.
Correct.
Sure, well, we have a motion that's been made. Do we have a second?
I second.
Okay, and now any discussion, any questions? Ellen? Any, any other discussion or question? Go ahead.
Should this motion pass, would I be able to redact my names that I have entered in that this is the first time the public is hearing that they can submit names, so if someone happens to email me, I would, again, that would supersede anything I came up with.
The, the motion is silent, as to that, I'm sure you can write email, Ray, and say, "I didn't submit these names," no problem, that's not a worry. Okay. Can you just repeat the motion again?
I don't know if I can do it in the exact same.
Okay.
Elegant way, but I move that we, to select the four positions for the superintendent selection committee, that board members submit names to Ray on recommendations that they personally have, and that we also advertise to the Willmet community for people to apply for positions on the selection committee, and that, once we have all the names collected, and this provided that we can figure out a communication strategy for this, we, the board can look at the names that have been submitted and recommended, and we can express our opinions to Ray. And who should be selected.
And then we try to reach consensus?
And we try to reach consensus.
Okay. Right. Okay. That's the motion, and it's already been seconded. Are we ready to vote? Okay. Board members, again, on voice vote, all in favor, please say yea.
Yea.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay. The motion carries by voice vote, and we now have a decision. Thank you very much for the conversation. That brings us through Superintendent Search update to information items and information item written communications.
Yes, the board received three written communications this month, first from Scott Dawson regarding school safety and security, the next two were from Karen Glennemeyer and Amanda Nugent regarding the Highcrest outdoor classroom.
Thank you very much, and now administrative announcements.
Yes, October is National Principals Month, which honors the essential role of principals in creating quality in our schools. We cannot thank our principals enough for their passion, commitment, vision and leadership in our schools, not to mention the countless hats they wear each and every day.
But you know what, we can try real quick, maybe we all give a, the principals are in the back, maybe we say, "Thank you very much." Thank you all very much.
Next, we receive FOIA this month, the first from Dave Sylvester, a marketing representative for Sheet Metal Workers Union 73, requesting information for new construction, renovation and/or maintenance work planned for any District 39 buildings, including contracts awarded, names and contact information for said contractors and subcontractors.
Great, and now we have strategic plan updates.
Yes, the first one is the superintendent goals. This action item outlines my goals in support of District 39 initiatives. My contract requires annual board approval of these, there's nothing new or different in here, as these reflect the strategic plan itself.
Thank you very much, and that brings us to annual business.
Yes, as we do each year, we're presenting an estimated levy for 2018. The proposed levy represents a total increase of 2.1% for CPI plus new property growth. I'm pleased to report there continues to be a significant uptick for new construction in Willmet, as we have 45 brand-new homes under construction, and with that, we plan to welcome some new students to District 39 as well. Ellen Crispino has this report.
Thank you, Dr. Lechner. Tonight, we're presenting the estimated levy for 2018. The levy is the amount requested by a governmental entity to be raised from property taxes. The amount of the levy we are requesting is not the amount the district will receive. This is an estimate based on unknown variables. On the screen, you will see the levy calendar that lays out the dates for this process. Tonight, we are reviewing the estimated levy and the announcement of the public hearing scheduled on December 17, 2018 at 7:00 PM. The levy estimate is based on several variables. First, equalized assessed value, or EAV. Current EAV is not available at this time. We are estimating no increase in our EAV for our 2018 estimate of levy. When EAV increases, it doesn't mean additional tax dollars for the district. When EAV increases, Cook County lowers the tax rate. When the first installment is distributed, it is based on the 2017 EAV. However, when the county clerk determines the final allocations, typically in June, the taxes will be adjusted to reflect the actual 2018 EAV. The next variable is the Consumer Price Index. The December 2017 CPI of 2.1% was used for the 2018 levy. Under the Property Tax Extension Limiting Law, or PTAL, the tax cap, the base levy increase cannot exceed the lesser of the prior year's CPI or 5% plus new property growth. The general effect of this act is to limit revenue growth from the property tax to the rate of inflation plus an allowance for new property. Increasing the levy by CPI allows the district to cover ongoing inflationary costs. Next is new property growth, and this amount has not been released yet. To estimate new property growth, we begin by using a 12-year historical average to estimate this amount. Next, we add $4 million for the impact of Mather Place on Old Glenview Road that reopened in August 2016. Additionally, we are projecting another 17.7 million for new property within the community. In total, we are estimating new property growth at 37.3 million. The actual assessed value for new property growth will not be determined until closer to spring. Receiving property taxes associated with new construction helps the district to cover additional future costs. For example, new homes being built in Willmet have the potential for increased students in the district. The EAV, CPI and new property growth are all combined into the limiting rate calculation, which determines how the tax rate is calculated for all property owners. This formula is important, because it determines the maximum tax rate by limiting revenue growth to CPI plus an allowance for new construction. In the numerator, the formula takes the prior year's aggregate actual extension and multiplies it by 1 plus the CPI, which is 2.1% this year. The denominator takes the actual 2018 EAV, once finalized by the county, and subtracts out new property growth. Based on our current estimates, the limiting rate is 2.8602%. This slide shows the impact of new property growth on the levy. The left column shows the effect of the CPI increase on the levy. The right column shows the impact of CPI plus recommended new property growth of 37.3 million. In both cases, a current taxpayer pays the same dollar amount for a home with a market value of $500,000, for example. In both columns, you can see the district receives $1,091,000 due to CPI. For the recommended levy, in the right-hand column, the district receives an additional $1,067,000 or 2.05% due to new property growth. There are two important points to remember here. First, additional property taxes for new construction are paid only by the property owners, commercial or residential, who have the new construction. Existing property owners, as well as the new construction owners, pay the limiting rate, which is estimated at 2.8602% times the EAV. The amount of the levy request in the cap funds is $54.1 million allocated by fund as shown on this slide. The aggregate levy includes the bond and interest levy of 100, 1 million, sorry, $1,498,000. The debt service amount is not part of the levy request since the debt was previously approved. This is the amount of the actual debt service payments for 2018. The total aggregate levy recommended is $55.6 million. The law requires a public hearing when a tax levy exceeds 5% of the prior year's extension. Based on the levy estimate that is being recommended, District 39 is not required to publish a notice or hold a hearing. However, for transparency, District 39 historically has published a notice and held a hearing, even if the amount requested is below the legal limit. We are recommending the board approve the estimated amounts to be levied for the tax year as shown on this slide, and approve the public hearing on the proposed 2018 levy. Are there any questions?
Board members have questions? Go ahead.
I do. Thank you. So I just, I want to understand a couple things. Number, the definition of new construction, that include, that definition includes, from what I understand, written in here, new construction consists of improvements or additions? So when we say 45 new construct, houses under new, 45 new construction units, that doesn't necessarily mean 45 new homes being built? It's, includes homes that are have, it does?
No, it includes 45 brand-new.
Okay.
From the floor, because all the others are also included, there are more on top of that, those are the additions.
Or if they have large additions.
Yeah.
Or it's large additions? Thank you. So, okay. And then, last year, we, we levied, we extended the levy, what we asked for was 52,598, and what we were expected to get was 51,836, but our actual was 53. I just lost the actual. We got more than we had expected, I know that. And then, can I clarify too, that from what I understand, we also, our operating revenue came in 1.1 higher, as a million higher, as a result of state payments and the evidence-based funding model, that brought us up to 432,000 more than we thought we were going to get. That equals that operating revenue came in at 1.1 higher, and what I'm doing is referring to Dr. Lechner's email on August 16th, where he said, he's happy to finish, we finished up the year with a balanced budget, this was due to a couple items, revenue coming in 1.1 higher, million higher than planned, and then he referred to, the biggest factor was the catch-up in state revenue, which contributed to an extra 430 in revenue. And then, we also spent, we were under budget by 2.8 million, and that was as a result, that savings was realized through the education fund and the operations fund. My point I'm making is, we ended up with 3.9 million more in reserves or fund balance or whatever, wherever we put money that we weren't expecting to have, and at the same time, we're going to be extending, asking for a levy extension of 2.1 million. Today. Or in December. Right, so the 2.1 million that we are requesting now. Mm-hmm. The expect, like we had last time, the expected is actually lower than that, we're trying to capture here, so we can capture all the new construction. I get that, but I'm just clarifying that we are extending the levy on top of already, and we got more than we budgeted for last year. We, the, what we asked for was more than the expectation, but when came in was more than what was expected.
Just want to add that the state revenue that came in was money that we didn't get before, that we had to cover.
Again, but we weren't expecting it.
No, we were always expecting it, we didn't know when it was ever going to.
Okay, separate, right, but we, our expectation was 2.84 in CPI, with 2.84 in our, we asked for 4.35, with the expectation of 2.84. We received more than that, and. New construction came in a few million dollars higher than we had originally anticipated, based on the average, the five-year historical average. Right. So my point is, we got, we got more than we expected in budget, and we spent less money than we thought we were. So, bottom line is, we have 3.9 million dollars more in revenue than we thought we were going to have. I just want to know that. I don't have all the financial numbers in front of me right now for the end of last year. So we can answer that question.
I just want to say that we, we came out with nearly a balanced budget, we ended up the year with 400,000 more than.
I understand that, Ray, but we had.
Just 400,000 more than we budgeted. It was a balanced budget.
But as you made clear in committee last week, that the budget is not tied to revenues that we're asking, what we do, so, and bottom line is, we have more and received more than we were expecting. I'm making this clear, because I will, I bet you all can guess, that I'm going to say, I'm going to, I'm going to pull from the consent agenda, the recommendation for this amount for levy, and I'm going to say, no. amount for levy, and I'm going to say, no. So that's why, I'm giving my reasons of why. But I have additional, and we also have, you just said, 45 new students. I was going through the fall housing report, which we're going to be discussing soon, and here's another reason for it. We've had a decrease in enrollment by 39, compared to last year, 39 students. 103 compared to year 2016, 176 compared to 2015. And overall, since 2011, I'll only go back to referendum, to be fair, a net loss of 120 students. So, I think, that's another reason why. And three, really, my number one, well, actually, I got four as number one. But my third reason is, I was looking at our levy extensions, and I only went back to 2013, because that's as quickly as I could go back. We're already up, if we extend to this levy, or levy, extend the levy by this amount, we'll be at nearly $10 million, an increase in revenues from the community in six years, seven years. And finally, we did not complete an expense review. But again, I know you clarified that it's not tied to the budget, but last December, we said we'd do an expense review as a result of this very meeting.
So, any other board, board comments or questions? Okay. I do want to clarify that it was in the December meeting that we talked about the deep budget review. And just for the record, and you know this, and I know what you're saying, we did not complete that, but we did start that, and we decided as a board we needed to go a different direction, based on the fact that, you know, you among other board members thought that we weren't getting what we needed out. But I know you wanted it done before we got to here, and we didn't do that.
Well, I want to respond to that. It was three months ago that we said, go to a consultant, and the other, and we still haven't.
And that's on me.
Gone to that. And, yes, you're correct. In December, we made that promise. So I will clarify that it wasn't as a result of this meeting, it was a result of this to the December meeting that we made that and discovered that we hadn't made, done the expense review since the referendum.
Right.
On that note though, is something like the expense review, should that have been, does that have a place in the strategic plan or something to ensure that it's, it just occurred to me when he, that it's taken care of? Or does that make, does that prioritize it?
Yeah, I, I'm, I definitely think we should discuss something like that. I, I'm not sure the strategic plan is the right place, because that's more what we're doing educationally.
That's why I'm asking.
But I think in the strategy committee, that might be a reasonable.
I'm not, I'm not happy that we haven't done the expense review.
I understand. Okay. Other questions, thoughts, comments? Okay.
I do, actually.
Oh, sorry, John, go ahead.
Yeah, I was thinking about it. I, I share Tracy's concern about the increases and this levy process, but, but I also share, and I think I see the point, of sticking to the levy process the way we've done it traditionally. And I'm frankly looking forward to exploring, setting an upward boundary in our reserves. Because I think the way to deal with this issue is to, is to deal with it from a reserve perspective, and not on the levy side of funding.
Okay, thank you. And just as a reminder to the public, that is, you're referring to what Frank talked about in his earlier finance committee report, that we're going to review that. Okay, let's move on to the fall housing report. Oh, I did, sorry, I wanted to make one other comment, which is, I've been looking at these for a long time, which maybe makes it so that I understand it a little bit better than I did at the beginning. I found this exceptionally clear. Thank you very much.
Each year, we conduct a fall housing report that captures the number of students attending District 39 schools, and Dr. Christoparo has this report.
Good evening. As Dr. Lechner shared, we conduct our fall housing report based off enrollment on September 30th. Right now, we have, on September 30th, we have 3,549 students attending one of our six schools. This is a small decrease from last year. When comparing this year with fall 2017, kindergarten, second, and sixth grades all have fewer students, and our first, fourth, fifth, and seventh grade classes increased. Our third and eighth grade classes remained relatively stable, and our two largest classes, our seventh and eighth grade. While fall housing tells us the number of students in our buildings, fall enrollment informs us of the number of students we have a direct responsibility to educate. As Dr. Lechner stated, this number is 3,588, which is a small decrease from previous years. Both fall housing and fall enrollment numbers are useful for future projections and planning. We will continue to analyze for trends while monitoring enrollment. Thanks.
Do board members have questions or comments on the housing report? Go ahead, Frank.
Yeah, I just had one comment, and you pointed it out. The, the number is within, you know, estimate ranges of, of what we've had in the past. The item I think we need to continue to watch though is that the seventh and eighth grade numbers are large, which means as they roll off, there's potential for that number to decline. So, it's not a trend yet, but, but it's definitely something that we need to watch.
If you step across diagonally from grade to grade, you'll see consistently growth, second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth.
How about with the 45 houses that are under construction? Are we expecting, what kind of impact are we expecting in our student population? Any way to tell?
We'll have to find out, but I will say that the move-ins that we get are second to none in the township, and that's usually what keeps sustains our enrollment, stable. Other districts are seeing notable declines. Ours are basically stable.
Right.
Go ahead, John.
Yeah, I think, sort of variation on these questions. So what, what other trends are we seeing here? I mean, it's, it looks like it's trending down, but not by much. Other, is that, do we think that's going to continue?
We see that the, a lot of the move-ins are on the west side of town, Harper and Ramona.
Other questions or comments? Okay, thank you very much for that report. Next up, we have the student, excuse me, select student fees.
Yeah, a handful of student fees require early approval because parents need information to make decisions about summer programs. Our summer programs, as you saw recently this year, are self-sustaining, so we're not going to recommend any change in our summer enrichment fees. Similarly, with connecting kids, we do an annual tuition review, and we compare our charges to local preschools, public and private. We remain competitively low, but we're not recommending any fee changes for this as, either. Ms. Crispino, anything to add?
No, nothing.
Okay, board members have questions or comments? Great, thank you. That takes us to our last item of annual business, the fall assessment report.
Yes, the 2018 fall assessment report is an annual executive summary. Our students continue to outperform the state average percentage of students meeting or exceeding expectations. Katie Lee has this report.
Good evening. I will be sharing the 2018 fall assessment report with you tonight. This report will begin with MAPGROWTH. For many years, District 39 used performance series assessments to monitor student achievement. However, last year, we aligned with new tier township schools by adopting Northwest Evaluation Association's Measure of Academic Progress, MAPGROWTH. The district will administer this computer adaptive assessment as one tool to monitor second through eighth grade students' achievement and growth three times yearly, fall, winter, spring. Students were assessed in reading and mathematics for the first time during 2017-2018 school year. The board will be presented with district average RIT scores, percentage of student scores in the average or above average range nationally, and the percentage of students who have met projected growth targets within the context of grade level cohorts. When students finish a MAPGROWTH test, a RIT score is calculated that indicates the level at which the student was correctly answering questions of similar difficulty and complexity 50% of the time. RIT is an abbreviation for RASH unit, which is based on a stable, equal interval scale. The difference between scores in the same, is the same, and measures student performance regardless of age grades or grade level. To explain the percentage of students meeting or exceeding growth projections, Nate Johnson, who is a research scientist at NWA, shares the following considerations. Approximately 50 to 60% of students nationwide meet or exceed growth projections. So in other words, if a school or district has 50% of students meeting or exceeding their growth projections, it indicates that students are showing growth consistent with NWA's research. Percentage of District 39 students meeting or exceeding projected growth target is either within or beyond the 50 to 60% benchmark range. This table represents the results in reading. To serve as an example, the progress of our current fifth grade students, the class of 2022, is highlighted on the screen. The first row shares the mean RIT score. The second row shares the percentage of District 39 students who fall on the average or above average range for achievement nationally. And the last row for each cohort is the percentage of students who met fall-to-spring projected growth targets. In future reports, the growth target shared may change to the recommended timeframe, which is spring to spring. This table represents the results in mathematics in the same manner as the previous slide for reading. In general, for both MAPGROWTH, reading, and mathematics, over 90% of District 39 students' RIT scores for each grade level falls within or above the national average range. In addition, this year's baseline data demonstrates that the percentage of District 39 students meeting and exceeding projected growth targets is either within or beyond the 50% benchmark. Although achievement data is meaningful, District 39 began to reflect on student progress. Progress is measured by how much growth students make over time, typically from one year to the next. When achievement and growth data are used together, it can provide insight into student learning. NWA MAP provides student growth data using a, a student growth percentile model and organizes, and is organized in four categories, also known as quadrants. So the high achievement, high growth, high achievement, low growth, low achievement, high growth, and low achievement, low growth. District 39's goal is to monitor student growth for all students. These tables provide the percentage of District 39 students in each quadrant by grade level in reading and mathematics respectively, using fall 2017 to spring 2018 growth data. The other assessment that we will report on is PARC. District 39 has administered the partnership of assessment, for assessment of readiness for college and careers, PARC, to grades three through eight students for the past four years. On October 3rd, 2018, we send PARC student reports to parents and families for ELA, English Language Arts, and Mathematics. Each report provided an overall performance level, a score graph, and a performance level breakdown of specific skills. In addition, school, district, state, and cross-state averages were provided for comparisons within each context. On October 31st, 2018, Illinois State Board of Education, or ISB, publicly will release all PARC results. As you may be aware, ISB has determined that PARC will no longer be administered effective this academic year. They announced that Data Recognition Corporation will partner with ISB to build a high-quality, cost-effective solution for a computer adaptive assessment by 2021. That means that all Illinois districts will be required to administer a state assessment this spring and spring of 2020. However, at this moment, we have no further information, and we'll be updating you as we receive it. PARC describes student performance and progress toward grades, grade-specific standards according to five levels. For reporting purposes, we will share levels four and five, since these are defined as meet or exceeding expectations. This graph compares the percentage of students who fall within level four and five to the statewide results in mathematics. And this graph compares our students who fall within level four and five to the statewide results in English Language Arts. As you can see, the percentage of District 39 students meeting or exceeding grade-specific standards is above statewide results in both content areas. The majority of students who are not represented in this graph fall on the level-three performance, which signals that they were approaching standards in March. Tables three and four in the report, the board report, share the percentage at the other levels for you to review more specifically. This spring, as requested, the board will be presented with a second assessment report with a focus on MAPGROWTH, similar to the information presented tonight. And with this, I am happy to answer any of your questions.
Board members have questions? Go ahead, Frank.
Thank, thank you for this report. It's good to see some, some really good value that we've gotten from moving to the MAP process. It's kind of sad to see this waterfall chart empty after years of it being filled in. Not, not our fault, not your fault certainly, but sad. It's also, I think, reaffirming that we went to something like MAP, given that PARC is, has come and gone so quickly that, you know, we won't even miss it. And that it sounds like the next two years will be in turmoil, so having our own system that we can start trying to fill in this chart again will be great. So, first question. Given that there's a, a goal, I guess, from the state to have some kind of online testing process two or three years from now, is there any chance that that would require us to resync on the MAP? Or would we do both if, for some reason, they decide to pick yet a fifth or sixth or seventh new concept?
Yeah, I know that when I was part of the superintendents group that were pushing for this dynamic system, it was, so we would just have one tool. So, we hoped that PARC was going to be that, but it didn't. So, the, the goal for superintendents was to have one test.
Yeah, I'd hate to have to resync again in two or three years. That's not within your control, but we need to, to consider if they do go a different route, how we can keep some longitudinal studies and not have to keep redoing it every year. The, other, another question that I had, or a question, I guess, this time. For high-performing versus low-performing, the advantage of being in our school district is that we have a high percentage. So it's like 80% fall in that category. What we lose from that, I think though, is some gradation. So, I'd like you to consider how we can get, you know, a little bit more separation of the categories, because if, you know, 20% or less fall into one category, you suddenly lump 80% of the students into the high achieving category, so it's, there's less ways of determining if there's any patterns.
That's why we have the growth component, because that will separate it.
That was the second part of my question.
That's, that is the answer.
Okay, so then, on the growth component. I, I understand that the target is, you know, in the 50 to 60% range. I'm uncomfortable for a school district like ours that we're satisfied that 50 to 60% of the students meet the growth targets. So I'd like to at least consider that our target is more aggressive than that.
Absolutely. If you notice in the charts, even currently, we are higher in many of the grade levels in that area, so that is a really good baseline for us to.
On, on the MAP, I believe we are doing fairly well on that, on, or well, at least we're above that range more often. On the reading, not so much. But, but either way, I think that's something that we need to continually be looking at, that 50 to 60% is not as, as much as I would, I'd like to see in terms of, of growth of our students.
Yes.
Other questions? Lisa?
I want to second Frank's last comment. And I also want to ask about the PARC test for the kids who are in, who scored in the levels one, two, or three. What's happening with those kids? What happens to those test results? And are the teachers doing something with that?
Aware, aware of the PARC results? So, most of the, most of the breakdown reports that we receive are very helpful at the district level. So what we look for are trends and patterns of areas in which we can improve, or areas in which that we found strengths. And so, what my department does is we go through each of the grade level reports and identify strengths and areas of focus, and then we share it with our administrators, and then we ultimately share with staff.
I just want to add that PARC is not designed to be a student, like, we have the RTI program where we do all kinds of screening multiple times a year, so those kids have been identified through a separate process. PARC is for the state to monitor our performance and also give the big-picture work for the Quickenham Department. give the big-picture work for the Quickenham Department. So we don't use it for a, part of our WIN program. It's not, it's big picture.
So if a parent got a report last week where the student was in Level One or Two, would the district be reaching out and saying anything?
No, not necessarily. If it was an anomaly, we would. But typically, it's, that would probably be information that we would already know through our other assessments. It would not be a surprise.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
I have a couple.
Yep.
Just really on the report itself. I remember in past reports.
Yes.
That our bar, at least in PARC, and whether it's going away or not, we're comparing year-over-year in our district versus the state. Why has that changed?
So for, for this one, in what I explained about how PARC was administered since the spring of 2015, although the state may feel that the scores could be comparable, in spring of 2015, when it first began, it was administered in two installments, one in March and one in May. That's why I gave that historical slide. And in spring of 2016, it was modified to one test, given in April. And then it was just recently that it was administered in the same month.
Right, but that we made those clarifications in the previous reports, that the criteria changed each time or whatever, but still provided the comparison year-over-year for PARC. I want to know, so we had a bar that said, 2014, this is what people scored. 2015, this is correct. 2016, right?
You're asking for cohort reporting on PARC, right?
No, I'm, no, that's actually my next question. But just our district, how we've improved, or not?
I believe you may be referring to Performance Series, which is the model that we work.
It could be, okay.
Correct. Because we've never, as, for as long as I've done the reports.
Right.
This is the way that we have presented PARC.
Okay.
Because we couldn't make those comparisons. But however, we did mimic just now, this year, MAP results, just like Performance Series. And that's why you're seeing the cohort empty, because this is our first year. And in the past reports, Performance Series is filled in.
That was my next question, too, is, I thought, my understanding was going to NWA MAP, the, the focus there was so we could compare to our cohorts more like districts like ours versus the state. And I wanted, want to know why we don't have those comparisons.
So I have to request that report. It's a, you have to pay for the report you request through NWA to pull that information. I can do that for you by this spring.
I thought that was going to be part of our spring reporting, because also we're getting, we're hoping to get township data. We have.
That's what I'm asking. That's cohort, to me, is township data.
Yes, we're, we're working on getting township data as we speak, but it, it's not ready.
Okay. And I just wanted to make a comment based on something you asked. I've heard at, at Red meetings and in other circles that NW MAP, whatever, is most likely not going to be the assessment picked.
It wasn't.
For, right, it wasn't picked, but will not in the future be picked. As a result of that, it, it measures apt, like, you can go outside the boundaries of what is expected at that grade level. So it's not a true measure of, no, for statewide, of what we need to know. It's each different, whether we agree with that or not.
Right.
That's what, that, their argument is. It's not to see how far kids can go. That's why the test is important to us. But it's, that's why they're not going to probably, most likely, look at it.
John?
Yeah, I have a specific question about PARC. So I, I was looking at the math table for, and curious about, you know, if we, if we considered, thought about, reflected, or doing something about the drop in, the percentage total that meets and exceeds in math, that went from, I think, what, 72% in Fifth Grade to 52% in Sixth Grade, and then is working its way back up. And, and, I mean, it sort of begs the question, I don't really know, but I would ask, you know, do we have an issue in Sixth Grade? Is there something that we need to deal with?
I think there are many different factors we have to consider. It would be, you know, the cohort of students at that time, because those are different students that you are referencing at this time. So I was trying to refer to the analysis that we do. If I were to make a general statement on an area of focus that we could work on, I would have to look a couple of, like, a couple of years back on these evidence reports. And one would be more of the explanation of the conceptual understanding that students can make and draw from these standards. So for example, if I can read you, regardless of, like, computation or their ability to do that, mathematical modeling would be an area that I would say over the past couple of years, we could work on, in all the grade levels, really. But in particular, to address your question about Sixth Grade. And then understanding, there's another standard called understanding solving an equation as a process of answering question, which means that it's not just, hey, can you solve the equation, but do you understand what the equation represents? So that's what I would call, under the category of conceptual understanding, students able to convey that. So again, I would look, have to look at trends, and we share this information with, you know, our teachers, so that we can work with them on, hey, let's celebrate your successes, and then let's work on some areas that we can grow. And that would be one that would be up for discussion.
Great. Thank you very much. I'm going to move along to the next, because we have a little bit of a time pressure. As you know, I'm thrilled about having the growth in there. So I'll just say that again, as I always do. But thank you for that great report. Let's move along to Board Policy Review.
Go ahead.
Okay. So tonight, for, we're presenting for first read the rest of Section Three policies, as well as the first five for Section Four, which is what we'll spend the remainder of the school year on. So feedback is welcome.
Okay, and as is our standard process, make sure you get your comments to Heather by Friday. So go ahead and give them a read-through and, and get your comments in. Any questions, thoughts? Great. Oh, thank you. This is our second opportunity. That brings us to our second opportunity for the audience to address the board. Are there any audience members who would like to speak at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll continue with our agenda. That takes us to our Consent Agenda. Are there any items the board would like pulled from the Consent Agenda?
Yes, Mr. Steen, I would like the levy.
Number two.
The 2017.
The review of the tax year 2018 estimate of levy, et cetera, et cetera.
Exactly.
Okay, we will pull that from the Consent Agenda. Anything else that we would like pulled from the Consent Agenda at this time? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Penzica, please proceed with the motion.
I move to approve the Personnel Report dated October 22, 2018. I move to approve the 2018-2019 Superintendent District Goals. I move to approve the Attached Student Fees Schedule. I move to approve as first reading of the Board of Education Policy 2:240, Board of Education Policies Development, 3:30 Organizational Chart, 3:100 Councils, Cabinets, and Committees, 3:110 Policy and Regulation Systems, 3:120 Research Evaluation Planning, 3:130 Consultants, 4:05 System of Accounts, 4:07 Fund Balances, 4:10 Fiscal and Business Management, 4:15 Budget Planning, and 4:16 Identity Protection. I move to approve to release to the public the Executive Session Minutes of February 24, 2018, February 26, 2018, April 23, 2018, May 14, 2018, May 21, 2018. I move to dispose of Executive Session audio recordings pursuant to district policy for the following dates: June 6, 2016, June 27, 2016, August 29, 2016, September 26, 2016, October 24, 2016. I move to approve the accounts payable for bills listed between September 25, 2018, and October 22, 2018, in the following amounts: Educational Fund, $543,835.31; ONM Fund, $261,485.40; Transportation Fund, $157,997.43; Capital Projects, $414,009; TORT Fund, $305; Total All Funds, $1,377,632.14. I move to approve the manual checks issued between September 25, 2018, and October 22, 2018, in the following amounts: Educational Fund, $554,366.82; ONM Fund, $5,184.88; Transportation Fund, $101.73; For a total all funds of $559,653.43.
Motion has been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Johnson's ready?
Yes.
Tracy Cretty?
Yes.
Frank Penzica?
Yes.
Al Shaf?
Yes.
Lisa Shatov?
Yes.
Tom Stilwell?
Yes.
Yes. The motion carries. The A's have it. And then that brings us to a motion for item number two, the review of the tax year and the approval of the public hearing. May I have a motion on that?
I move to approve a public hearing on the proposed levy scheduled to immediately precede the regular December 17 meeting of the Board of Education.
Oh, could you reread that? I think you missed the first line of that. So, yeah.
Let me clarify. I move to review the tax levy, the tax year 2018 estimate of levy as per Exhibit A attached, and to approve a public hearing on the proposed levy scheduled to immediately precede the regular December 17 meeting of the Board of Education.
Thank you for the clarification. May I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Only to clarify, I will be voting yes for the review. I pulled it off the Consent Agenda, not clearly thinking that. I was thinking I was voting no to even extending the levy, but I'll be voting yes for their review, so.
Okay, great. Thank you. Presuming there's no other discussion, would the clerk please call the roll?
Johnson's ready?
Yes.
Tracy Cretty?
Yes.
Frank Penzica?
Yes.
Al Shaf?
Yes.
Lisa Shatov?
Yes.
Yes. The motion carries. The A's have it. Thank you very much. That brings us to our conference items. Is there any old business at this time? Is there any new business? Does anybody have any good in welfare? Okay, that is terrific. We are incredibly timely relative to our expectations. May I seek a motion to adjourn to Executive Session to discuss specific personnel?
I move to adjourn to Executive Session to discuss specific personnel.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Johnson's ready?
Yes.
Tracy Cretty?
Yes.
Frank Penzica?
Yes.
Al Shaf?
Yes.
Lisa Shatov?
Yes.
Yes, the motion carries. We are now adjourned to Executive Session. Time is 9:03. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Can we?